I'm solo.
Hey. Um, all right, so not much on the agenda today. We have um our next office hours coming up though.
This is Thursday, right?
Yeah, Thursday, nine AM Pacific. And we're still looking for one speaker as well. I think Ijoma found one speaker. We're not familiar with them. And oh goodness. We have a um a private chat with Ijoma and Prince who will be moderating. And they put the questions in there. So I am just catching up. One second. Anyway, um. Let me first of all share. Opening notes with everyone here. Please sign in. Also, I don't know, can one of you maybe scribe today? That'd be really helpful. Um, all right, so. This is the only um item on the agenda that we have. The questions for office hours. So um. Yeah. Oh, there. Let's see. Oh, God. Um, okay. Share my screen. It's probably just easier. You have a lot of attendance today. That's awesome. Um, hello, everyone who's just joining. I'm going to reshare the link because for some reason. Good morning. For some reason, the chat just never persists the link. Um, when new people join. So um, I just saw the list of questions in the chat. Um, with Ijoma and Prince. Um. Oh, and Ijoma, I saw that um you're going to handle moderation in the end. Um, without Prince. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Um. I'm copying the questions over here. I didn't do that. All right. Share screen. So the next office hours is on pitching your ideas effectively. Um, have a ton of questions here. And do we want to just go through and curate these questions? Or do you want to just handle that offline Ijoma?
Sorry, sorry, I didn't get that.
Oh, no worries. Um, so I just copied the questions um from our chat with Prince. And Sania, um, just as a starting point. So um, we can tailor these now. We can just go through these now. Or um, we can work on these offline. What are your preferences?
Well, it depends on the agenda for today's meeting. If we have more important things to talk about, we can work on it offline. Because the questions are many, so we'll have to to look at the most important ones to talk about during the office hours.
Okay, um, I think the only other agenda item. Well, the main agenda item I had was the office hours and getting the questions. Since we have them, um, yeah, we can probably um take a look at these later. Um, the only other question is the second speaker, right? Um, did you want to have just the one speaker or preferably a second one?
Well, it's it's um a conversation. It would make a lot of sense to have. So people sharing their ideas, but then it depends on what we have. Um, I last might check the doc. We just had one person indicate interest. And you said you would get someone from the foundation. I don't know if you've been able to get someone. We can work with one, but two is perfect.
Yeah, so I haven't found anyone. Um, I don't know if uh, folks here either volunteer or can have um. Yeah, have ideas for who to speak. I mean, I think right now we're trying to not repeat speakers, but I honestly don't care. Um, if we can find a good speaker um who can speak to pitching your ideas. Um, and they've already been in a previous uh office hours, that's fine with me too. Yeah, does anyone have thoughts?
I have a few people I can ask um that I know from OpenSSF. I don't want to throw their names out there without their consent. So I I can ask the one or two. Uh, but since it's tailored to open source, um, I think that that's kind of what limits us. Not limits us, but um I have other speakers on how to pitch your ideas. Um, but not really in the open source project space.
Okay, um, I still think that could be fine. Um, hopefully some of those skills are transferable to to open source. Um. Yeah, I would I would think so. Um, so yeah, if you could reach out to Sania, I think that'd be good. Um. Yeah, um. Okay. Um, do you have someone scribing? We don't. Um. Okay, so um. The final. So. Um, it's kind of the second speaker. It's on here. Um. Um, and then, Sania, did you want to provide like a summary of how Grace Hopper went?
Uh, yeah, uh, I think Grace Hopper went uh piece size logistic things. Um, next time you should not have all panelists from one location. So four out of the five panelists were from Florida. Um, and it was during the week of uh Hurricane Milton.
Hurricane, yep.
Yeah, uh, so thankfully we were able to move it from in person to virtual. But we got a lot of um with the chat and then like on social, we got a lot of positive feedback on it. That was very helpful. Um, I just haven't seen any traction internally to see if it if it brought folks in, you know?
Yeah, that seems really hard to track. Um.
Yeah.
With with how they would do that. But yeah, I'm glad everyone is able to still like join in, even if it was just virtual. But this is really unfortunate timing. Um. Yeah, okay, so that's good feedback, though. Um.
Yeah, something to think about for future uh panels or discussions. I think we also might want to look at uh upcoming or future conferences that we might want to do panels and start sorting that out.
Yeah, I was just looking at a couple of conferences. So Open Source Summit is much later next year. It's going to be in June rather than the spring. Um, I think normally it was in the spring. Um. So I think we have a fair amount of time to to prepare for that. Uh, keep going. EU could do something there. And I think that one is in April.
Yeah, I think I think it also depends on who we had to speak um and budget.
Yeah, I know these conferences typically pay the speakers and you can apply for the travel, right? But um it can be kind of difficult to to get enough travel funding, right? I think the travel doesn't cover everything either, the travel scholarship, so.
Yeah, I think it's just like hotel funds, which is a good amount, but it's more like there's always added extras.
Yeah. Um. Okay, um. So. I think she's dropped away briefly.
Did I lose everybody or I'm just not hearing anybody?
Um, she jumped off the call, so I'm just waiting for her to come back.
No, no worries.
I still see her on the document. I'm just assuming something happened. Uh, in the meantime, does anybody else have any agenda items or things to talk about?
Um. At the last meeting that I attended with you guys, um, one of the i- issues was um trying to get the YouTube videos better organized. And I believe Rob, if I'm getting his name correct, I'm not sure. Yeah. Christopher um stated would assist us with um getting the information. Or at least find out how do we get the information correct on the YouTube channel? And I just want to know, um, I provided information for the last community hour that we had in Slack and I opened up a GitHub issue, but I don't know if there's any movement or what support I can help to make movement on it.
Okay, uh, I will have to look into that, uh, reach out to Crowe and see. So did you speak with Crowe or that was just from the conversation of the last conversation?
I haven't spoken to anybody since that meeting at all.
Okay.
Um, I I put a couple of things in uh the Slack channel, but that was on on that day. And I've unfortunately been traveling and doing my others, my regular jobs. So I haven't really hooked up with it. So since we're having the meeting today, that's when I figured I would ask.
Um, okay.
But it's not an emergency. I just want to know what what we should do.
Yeah, usually operation, you're not seeing the videos or you want to like change something?
I see the video, but one of the conversation was is um, and I will find the Slack conversation was about how can we update the content so that it actually has a summary and a link on how to join DEI and stuff like that. Right, because it has, it just has the video and no description or anything.
No description, I think. Uh, that would be operations team. Uh, reach out to Kukil if you if you want to take charge on that action, reach out to Kukil. Let me message.
Could you spell his name or give me his name or?
Yeah.
I'm really bad at names, so.
There you go. Oh, she spelled it right. I didn't. I'll come text myself.
Sorry about that, like forced restarts, uh, just no warning whatsoever.
It got very quiet. I wasn't. Like, so as you're back, we're talking about um conversations from the last call on the YouTube videos on getting the description updated. So just letting Paris know, reach out to Kukil on Slack and let him know to get that updated for us. He'll either he'll do it or he'll point to the right direction, but the last last I knew, he was the run still running the YouTube.
And my only other thing, my only other issue was is that I wrote a first draft. And I literally wrote a first draft. So the question is that should anybody be able to proofread or anything to make sure that whatever I said is okay before we posted?
And that was that was the GitHub issue you posted. I remember reading something. I was like, oh, this is nice to have. Is that separate to the GitHub issue or is you have the the description written somewhere else?
I'm going to post a GitHub uh issue out right here um because I created it in GitHub because we're supposed to be trying to use it.
Yeah.
I also um. I also updated Slack with a point pointer to that, so.
Okay, thank you. I'll add it to my actions today to to review it. Um, and if anybody on the call could also review it so we can get that updated. Uh, the issue is on the meeting notes. That way we can probably get this out by the end of the week. You're muted, Paris.
Minor question for another day maybe, but how do we do this moving floor? What is the workflow so that when I am available, I'll be happy to help? But then if I'm not available, who else can help, you know, and stuff like that?
I think for this, what I envision is a template per per community office hours that like, I think we have our next one this Thursday. So in this call, we should write up the description. Um, that way it's not on just one person and we can use this time to kind of talk about it. But we should use this time to write up the description, make sure it's good. And then somebody takes the action to um send it off to operations. Right? That way you could lead it, but then if you're not here, it's still as part of the full uh DEI like process. How does that sound?
It sounds good to me. Yeah, thank you. Um, I know I I skimmed what you had written up, Paris. And I think someone had mentioned that it might even be a good blog post. So I don't know if you want to also like dual purpose your write-up, right? On the one hand, to put it as the um.
Well, that's sort of good. I agree with you. And I had no problems creating a blog post, but I felt that we should actually update the content first before we put
Yeah.
a blog. And I had no problems with the suggestion. I thought it was a good idea and but um I I think our last conversation was with how could Christopher better support us? And one of the things was around this. And um, and then I didn't see anything in the Slack channel and I haven't been available to even follow up, so.
Yeah, I think Crowe is currently busy with the Sauce Fusion event that's going on this week. So he's like traveling um this week, I believe. Um, yeah, we should follow up with him on that. I know, um, Sania, you talked to Sally? And Angela, maybe?
Yeah.
So they they should also be on it. I think we can probably follow up with them or Kukil or, yeah.
On it for the the YouTube or for the the blog?
For the YouTube. Yeah, sorry, for the YouTube.
Okay. Yeah, I can message them now in the chat and see. Um, okay, if somebody could share the screen, so maybe we can do a quick review of the description and just have them update the previous one. I know you did an update, but I'm on my phone right now. Screenshot is very, very tiny.
Yeah, I need to log back into GitHub.
Oh, well, I guess everyone who's on the call, if you can just take a moment and uh, look at the issue. If you have any feedback.
I can share now. I'll pull it up. Okay, so hopefully everyone can see my screen. Um. All right, so. Um. Meetings, there is, I believe, this is the write-up. Yes.
Oh, so for me, that first sentence, if you scroll up real quick. Uh, the OpenSSF September Community Office Hours are for the DEI working group. I feel like there's some context missing in that sentence.
Um.
Unless you want to say it's hosted by the DEI.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. Yeah, um, can I? Oh, I guess I have to like log in to be able to edit. Um, but yeah, we can we can edit this. Um, so it should be our hosted by. Yeah, I agree. Um. And maybe I should say this month's focus or something is on.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we should have just like a general blurb for off that describes office hours generically, like we use for our um, for our social media posts. As well.
Yeah, social and then the YouTube, the YouTube's. Um, and then we can probably be like, oh, previous topics have focused around blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. We could even, we could even like link to the previous videos um like from the.
Yeah.
Um, going here for a moment. So I'm sure I'm sure Eddie did this, Paris. Um, I want to remind myself. So I think um.
Just to let you know, at the top of that statement is a link directly to the video, so you don't have to search for it.
Right, okay, um, is this going to give us related videos? Okay, yeah, so um, my head looks funny. Um.
I don't think so, but okay.
It it's just the way my hair was that day, I guess, um, and the like weird.
We all think the same about ourselves. It's okay.
I know. Um, anyway, so um. Yeah, the description is quite uh empty. Um. But also, should we ask them to change this title over here to say like DEI Community Office Hours?
I think um in the in the title, you definitely have the DEI working group, something in there or a community office as part of it as a standard template, so that when people search for it, it shows up.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't also have what we're talking about, but most of the ones that I see that work really well, they have either a standard thing in the prefix or a standard thing as a suffix at around the uh description of the video. You don't need both, but just one.
Yeah. That and then I also hope that they'll create just, so the reason why I was searching is because I don't know that they have just like a playlist for all of our videos. Um.
We are the OpenSSF. No, we don't have a playlist um at all. But then again, the question is, what is the process for getting a playlist? And then how do we identify all the videos since we're not consistently having um, certain things in a subject lines like some of the other groups do?
Yeah, I recently found like a very old one from like last year that I think was Jay and Sania talking. Um.
Probably.
Yeah, and I was like, whoa, it's a definite throwback. Beautiful playlist. Okay, so we do already have a playlist. It's just titled Office Hours. Um, interesting.
Which is very vague because there's other office hours too. I think.
Um, I see something about the um the, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, um, concerning the the graphics. Um. It's a little, I thought, please, let me just see. It's supposed to be a thumbnail. But uh, but I don't know if it matters. Can we, is it okay if we improve when it comes to that aspect as well?
Yeah, I think absolutely. Um. So you mean so that there's always a consistent graphic when like the video comes up? Is that what you mean?
Okay, just like the ones beside it, you'll notice, yes, it's a, it has a landscape. Um.
Uh, yeah, I see what you mean. Yeah, the orientation.
Yeah. Yes, yes. So we can have two two um graphics. One that we use when we are posting our socials. And then when we want to post the the video and the recording on YouTube, we use them the thumbnail. So and then another thing is um, is it okay to spotlight the speakers on the design? Oh, sorry, and the graphics or just the topic? Just like the one by this one, let's chat open social security with.
Yeah.
Can you see?
Yeah, this one?
Yeah, something like that. Yes, yes.
Um. Yeah, so I see what you're saying. It's the the speaker's um photo is part of the like thumbnail. Yeah. Um.
Yeah, because most times um eh, people are volunteering to speak. Um, we are not paying them, so sometimes people want to use it as an opportunity to build their portfolio. So they want all the evidence that they can get that they actually participated in this, yes.
Okay, yeah, even the moderator, I think, could be hosted if you want, but uh the speaker is more important, so um, that seems fine. I'm trying to dig up like the old, I think it's this one here. Where I found like some really old content. Where I found like some really old content. Because if we could, um, bring that in together, that would be my preference. Here, DEI Subcommittee. Oh, not seeing Christina in a while. Um, but are these just meetings or are these the actual office hours?
Those are the meetings. I don't, I don't think we had many office hours last year, like, I remember one or two.
Okay. Um. We can try to dig those up, I wouldn't even know how to search for them. Um, I think it's part of the problem.
Yeah, cuz there was also a delay on when they were posted. So, I, like, if they were posted a couple of weeks after, it would have been easier, but I think they just magically appeared one day.
Okay, um, so I'm like, mate, taking notes over here. Um, find, find the old videos. I guess we just need to like, I don't know, maybe sit down with Cahill or Sally or whomever to make these changes. Um, okay, so. I assume you want to have these ready for Thursday. So we need, like, probably the blurb template. Um. The playlist renaming can maybe be updated. Um, Ijoma, did you want to? Actually, no, you probably are busy with just preparing to moderate. Um, we need, yeah. Maybe even the open SSF marketing people can help us with the, with the graphic. I imagine they have like a marketing template.
I can spin up the, the graphic for this Thursday. Uh, I had shared the Canva with, uh, Yoma. I can share, I can share it with the group too.
Yeah, I'll work on, I'll work on the graphic. Oh, yeah, I'm supposed to have done that. I will do that tonight, I'll share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries if it's not done yet, um. Yeah, so then you can probably even tweak it to make it landscape and, and vertical depending, um, what the target is.
Yeah, yeah, we do that.
Um, okay, so just to recap. What are our action items that we've left, um? Okay. So, um, you said you were going to seek the second speaker?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, uh, have two people that are potential, one is open source and one is not.
Okay.
Um, I'm pitching ideas and then. Think I, I assigned myself something else that I don't remember right now.
Um, the graphic, maybe, but no, then you do must it, um, she's graphic. So, um. And then, um, I can take on reaching out to. The marketing people and just like nudging them about the. The YouTube updates, um. I don't know if we're going to accomplish that this week, again, because of the Sauce Fusion event, I think everyone.
That's right.
Is in Atlanta right now. Um, or whichever town outside of Atlanta that they're actually in.
Yeah, so what I'm doing right now is I'm just reading, um, a Slack post. Based on our conversation to Khalil and Rob, basically saying when they return, could they help us with this? Um. And point them back to this conversation. And. Yeah, and then, uh, maybe next week, this is something that I could follow up with them when they return.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Ijoma.
So, um, our only other question is, is, um, you and, I'm not sure how to enunciate your name. Is it Yasine? Am I saying it correct or am I totally off base?
Yes, Sonia.
Yes, Sonia, um. You made some comments about the. That you wanna make some typographical or improvements, could you just add them in the comments to that GitHub? And I'll, I'll update the edit of that, um.
Yeah, I'll, I'll submit, I'll submit my, uh, updates to it, um, once I'm back on the computer.
No, no, no worries, um, and then that way I can incorporate them. And, uh, the only other question is, I had on there was, is I think we should have a call to action, no matter what. About how they can actually join us or get involved, and the question would be, what would that hyperlink be to? And again, I don't need that answer right now, but I guess we need it once we decide to get the.
I usually hyperlink to openssf.org forward slash get involved. Okay. That's the baseline of like all the links, so mainly this, projects, Slack, calendar, yada, yada, is all in that one. Do you need me to type that one out?
No, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah. If you want to point them directly to the working, to this working group, um, I typically link to the Slack. Um, and then just give them the channel name. Um, but yeah, Ijoma, you've been waiting to say something.
Oh, okay, I have two questions. So, um, one concerning the office hours and Thursday. So, um, the session is centered around pitching your ideas. So I wanted to know whether it's niche focused and open source or. Can the speaker or speakers talk about other areas? Um, like probably pitching your startup, you know, it, it, there are a lot of things you can pitch, right? So I wanted to know where we are focusing on, is it just open source related? And then the second question is, um, do we have a team that handles when it comes to? Um, cuz I know, um, Open SSF has, um, a branding guideline. So I wanted to know if there is a guideline that I can follow. Since I want to keep working on the designs and I would love to not just be doing. A particular type of design, like just the white one and putting the logo and the other information. So I wanted to know if there is room for me to make changes, do something way better or something much, um. Pleasing to the eyes, you know, not just trying to do different designs than just to that.
Um, we can probably ask, so to your second question, you can probably ask. The, the marketing people again, I even remember seeing a, a marketing packet somewhere. That you can download, um, so you can try to dig that up. Um. For you, um, so that it's like more consistent with.
The branding.
With the branding, exactly, thank you. Um. For your first question, um, I personally think it's fine to be broader than open source. Um, but I still think that there should be at least one question that's specific to open source, um, development. I don't know if others have other thoughts.
I like the idea of generic with context of open source. I think the scope should be open source, but like, I feel like a lot of the information will, would be somewhat transferable to other. To like security or tech kind of industry.
Yeah.
If I understand the question correctly.
Does that answer your question, Ijoma?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So if you find the marketing packets you mentioned, can share with me. Or point me to who I can reach out to concerning that.
Yeah, I definitely will. So I'm posting them in the chat here. Don't know if they have packet. Yeah. Ah, and they even have a presentation template, that's pretty good, actually. Um, oh, there's Cahill, um. Yeah, so, um. Is, is that what you need, Ijoma? Um, do you have everything you need for that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so one of my second speakers said yes, they're available. Um.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, can we add their name to the?
Yeah.
So we have that. Recorded, um.
I'll get them. I'll get them set up. Ah, that's a lot.
It's a huge link, that's fine. More text than I wanted.
There. There you go.
Um. And then I think the only thing that we started working on last month, or I guess earlier this month, um. But it's been a long month for me, um, is the, it's been a long month for a lot of people.
Yeah, I feel that.
Is, um, the, the tip of the month, so, um. I don't know.
That's right.
To, uh. Dispone that, eh, yeah, if you want to do like October, November, December. Um, and just take snippets from our previous office hours, that would be fine by me. Um, I guess that just means following up with those speakers and making sure that they're okay with us. Taking that and putting their name on it. Um.
Only one for this month, next, and then December. We could probably want, do one per seminar, uh, webinar.
Yeah.
And then just call it a day.
Yeah, I agree. We can just.
Uh, I can, I put, I can put the tip together quickly and then I know they said that just send it over to them, the marketing team. Just send it over and they'll create their, the graphics or whatnot.
Cool, yeah, if they can do that, that's even better. Um. I had some notes about the YouTube, I don't know, um, I just saw that you sent a message, Paris. Um.
I'm sorry, but did you just mention my name and I'm trying to help type, so I'm not very good at it.
Ah, my bad, um, so. Uh, I had just seen that you sent a message. With Cahill and Grove, is that right?
Chris, Rob?
Yeah. Oh, here it is, okay, I'm seeing it now. Um. Okay, yeah, great, um, just from our discussion today, I can add it to the notes. I had summarized the thing, the changes you wanted to see, that's all, um.
Sure, and, and I'm basically pointing it back to these meeting notes, um, and so they can look at that. But Khalil already responded, said totally, so.
Okay, yeah, um, we have that. Um, I think the ones that I want to add here is, um. Move older videos into the playlist. And they need to have a consistent, um, refix or postfix, um, into the. I think. So those were the notes I think we had. Okay, um, is there anything else? And you said, yeah, I can help you with the, um. With the tip of the month, I can, you know, I can pick one of the office hours, you can pick another and we can just sort of like parallelize. Um, that work, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I think the first one I spoken, so I can just create the tip. Um, and then I think we had two others, I think we're going on the fourth. Maybe, uh, and then I saw one of the videos was recently posted, so that can be a quick. So if there's four, I'll take the first two and then you take, if you want the last.
Yep.
Last.
Okay, yeah, I can take the, the one from September and then the one from this week.
Okay. That works.
Yeah, um, one final note on Paris's, uh, summary, I think that's a really good. You should make like a template out of that and also just record those notes. Um, keep like a record of those summaries, um, in the repo. So if you wanna open a PR Paris for like community office hours. Um, really just trying to make the most of the work you already put in into writing, um, that summary. So we can also point folks to, you know, if you'd rather read the summary than watch the video, right, there's the. Um, there's the summary, right, does that make sense?
I'm following it, I'm just making sure I, but I heard what you said, right, um, you're suggesting that. Um, the format that I'm using, you don't mind using as the first template? As, as a format, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, pretty much, so we can make a template out of that. Um, because you already have different sections that are like the summary, then like the main talking points. Maybe we can add a like topic section and a speaker section. Um, link to the YouTube video like you did. Um, and then each time that we have an office hour, we just submit a PR for like that specific office hour. And now we're like collecting the summaries, um, in the, in the repo. Um, yeah.
We can probably ask them for also for the transcript since it's recorded.
Also true, yeah.
And then we can just make magic with AI and human touch.
Yeah, we'll just have like AI-generated podcast out of this, almost.
No, 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 it needs to have the human touch, that's what I said, AI-generated with the human touch.
I know, I know. Yeah, it's gonna be much better, plus I want the, the speakers' voices, not some like AI-generated voice. Okay, uh, but we can also like coordinate this offline, uh, Paris.
Yeah.
I can like go in and just create like a, like a folder in the repo or something, um, for all of our office hours. It does maybe mean that we have to go back and re-watch the first two. Just to get those summaries.
I'm with you, I cheat, I take the transcript and I run it through an AI to get me all the information. But then I write what I want, because I don't like the way the chat engines write at all, so. But just to get what we're, what we were talking about to keep points and pull out quotes, I use the chat engine to do that.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine, um.
Yeah.
I, I personally don't like what, what it spits out for me, so. Um, if, if I ask it to write it, then I'm like, I don't, I don't understand how you even got to the idea, so. I don't tend to use it for writing, just for analysis.
Just template, that's what I use it for. Uh, we could probably even have it, um, the, the. Just template, that's what I use it for. Uh, we could probably even have it, um, the, the, the videos before. Have it pull out cuz you can send it, you, there's some that you can send it to YouTube video link and it'll give you a summary.
Oh, that's cool. So if you find that information, please share that in the meeting notes, cuz I would like that, so.
Yeah, it's somewhere in the many Windows tabs I have.
I, it's not something you look for now, but if you haven't remembered, but, um, and you happen to find it, thank you. I appreciate that.
Definitely.
I'm almost at time and I have another meeting. Is there anything else I can help you guys with today?
Um, no, thank you. You already helped a ton, everyone here really. Um, so, yeah, I think, um, Ijoma, Yessenia and I were going to continue being in touch about Thursday. And then, um, probably makes sense to connect, uh, Fatima. Um, and I forget the other speaker's name. Um.
Yeah, we'll, we'll coordinate that offline.
Yeah, we can coordinate that on Slack.
Yeah, Paris, thank you so much for, for those, Ijoma as well and, and Jay for your, for your presence and spirits.
Uh, you guys have a great day.
Thank you.
You as well. Thank you. Nice.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.